Before I printed the agenda, can we ditch that?
Okay.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, on this Monday, August 19th, 2024, I'd like to call the regular Board of Education meeting to order, and if you would, please stand with us to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. President Ratliff was unable to attend tonight, so I'll be conducting tonight's meeting. Jolene, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Ratliff is not here. Mr. Weidling?
Here.
Mrs. Dyer?
Here.
Ms. Swanger?
Present.
Mr. Dyer?
Here.
Okay, item number three on tonight's agenda is a superintendent's report, back to school. Mr. Haner?
Absolutely. Mr. Weidling, kind of an extension from two weeks ago, and just going to fill you in on what happened this past week in our buildings. We met with our SRO officers, we established those expectations, they're in our buildings, doing a phenomenal job. We held our convocation on August the 12th here at Harding High School. We had a guest speaker, Scarlett Lewis. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to hear her speak. If you hadn't, I would encourage you to do so, just for your understanding, Ms. Lewis' son was murdered during the Sandy Hook tragedy that happened, and she created Love Movement, Choose Love, and so really powerful. We held open houses in all of our buildings. I was able, from the 3:00 to the 7:00, make it to every building. I will tell you that the lines were very, very, very long, that, so we had a wonderful turnout. We had Marion City Schools' food service provide snacks for our students and families, so it was a wonderful turnout. We did transition days. I was able to be here at Harding and listen to our 9th graders come into the building, and then listen to Dr. Bolden share his expectation to his student body. I was able to get to the 6th grade, but not during their assembly time. August the 15th was opening day for our students, and then today was for pre-K and kindergarten, was their first days in. So if you probably got into our buildings, you heard some sad eyes and some screaming probably happening at first, but those subside very quickly.
They'll be okay.
I'm really excited to share our enrollment. From the 5th of August to the 19th of August, we went up 160 students in all of our buildings, only one building that had a negative, and that was Grant Middle. All the other ones, we had an increase. Please keep in mind, some of that is going to be due to our preschoolers coming into our buildings, so that kind of raised our enrollment. In teaching and learning, we submitted our one plan for ODU to get re-approved again, so we're waiting to get that back. We met with State System 7 and worked with our state personnel developing grant, I think it's SPIDIG? Is that right? SPIDIG grant?
Yeah, I haven't heard that in a while. Gotcha.
We're continuing to meet with teaching and learning to create plans for our students to receive after-school enrichment. If you remember, we lost that grant 21st century, so we're already meeting with our teams on how we can fill that gap of our students. So I will keep you definitely abreast of that. We talked about in our human resources, that teaching and learning is meeting this week to discuss and revise the requirements for the 3rd grade reading guarantee and the need for intervention and high-dose tutoring. Please keep in mind that when a child is on a RIMP, they are required to get high-dose tutoring and intervention, so we're working through that and the new requirements, and I will keep you abreast again of our plan moving forward with that. We're in those planning stages right now. Also, Dr. Kenny was asked by Marcus Hersberg to speak to his pre-education students, OSUN. This will serve twofold, educating our future teachers and us, the opportunity to get into those classrooms, and hopefully maybe subs and tutors and things like that that we can get to our schools. Our facilities continue to meet. There will be a resolution today on our board for Meta. We had a couple of few hiccups on transportation, but we were there on the spot. We handled those situations and kept the buses moving. In our athletics, we've had a really good turnout. Middle and high school sports are underway. We had 221 high school athletes currently, and we have 125 middle school athletes. Just for your information, right now, this Friday, the 30th, our varsity will play Ashland. Our JV is away. They will play Ashland on the 31st of August, and our freshmen will play Ashland on August the 31st as well. Girls tennis, on the 27th, they play Ontario. They play Marysville on the 28th, and they play Pleasant on the 29th. Soccer's on the 28th, they play Briggs, and then on the 31st, they're awayed at Clyde, and our JV is away at Shelby on the 28th. Our golf, they're home on the 26th to Clearfork, and on the 27th, Moak and Valley View, and then our cross-country is August 31st at Wapakoneta. That's all I got.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Haner?
I just have one comment. I was here for convocation when Scarlett Lewis gave her speech.
Yes.
And that was powerful.
Yes.
So it was just a powerful message and a good message for all of us. So thank you, whoever brought her in, thank you, thank you. That was, that was a good way to start the school year.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congrats on a successful start, too, so.
Have we had any issues with busing? I don't want to jinx this.
No.
Never mind, I didn't ask that.
No.
Never mind, take that back, rewind that.
That's why I paused. Sprinkling from the record, yes.
Mr. Mullins, let's rewind that.
It's like, yes, you did say that out loud.
Okay, moving on to number four, the treasurer's report. Item A, Board Minute Approval, motion to approve Board Minutes from July 15th, July 22nd, and July 23rd. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Any discussion?
I have just a question. When we, when I looked at the minutes, sometimes it says refer to the video or the YouTube or whatever. What if someone, did we used to link that to minutes or something so that people can easily find the YouTube?
Maybe they used to, nobody's, I didn't know that was a thing, so.
Is it possible?
I'm sure it is. I just, I just have, would have to figure.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mullins is nodding his head, so, yeah, that's a good idea.
I know, I never, I never think.
I know we get it in our email, that link and stuff.
Yeah.
But someone had mentioned to me that they were having a hard time finding those YouTube.
Okay, thank you for that. I will make sure those get updated.
Thank you, great idea. Any further discussion? Jolene, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Okay, item B, Financial Approvals, motion to approve the following financial items, July checks, July fund balances, and July financial report. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Does anybody have any questions on the reports? Okay, good, that's, they're thorough.
Okay, Jolene, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Item C, Donations. The treasurer recommends approval of the following donation, $273 to the principal fund at Benjamin Harrison Elementary from Marion Community Foundation. Do we have a motion?
I'll approve.
Second? Any discussion? Thank you very much, Marion Community Foundation.
I was going to say.
There you go.
Comments, thank you, Marion Community Foundation.
For continued support while they're in school and even after, so. Jolene, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Moving on to number five, Hearing of the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the Board to listen to public comments, but it is not intended as a time for dialogue. The Board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with our procedures. The only slip that I received tonight is from a Mr. Christian Dunston, if you'd like to approach.
Just to bring your attention, I don't know if you are aware or not aware, so, I've had little people transition to new schools this year, and in the transition, two of them are at Grant. And I said, how was your, one of them, she was her first, was 6th grade, first three days, she went from, I don't know if I want to do this, to, oh my God, I'm so much, I love this, I love this so much. The concern is, I have six minutes to eat lunch. And I said, what do you mean, you only have six minutes to eat lunch? She says, when we go in and we get seated and they release us, by the time I get through the line and back, I have six minutes before they tell me I have to go. So, I don't know if there's a more efficient way to do this, but I'm also fairly certain that she's not the only person that only has six minutes to eat lunch, and when you're in the 6th grade, it's a new school, you're two days in, you're three days in, and two of those three days, you've had a combined 12 minutes to eat, that can be taxing, because now you're probably not eating, and now you've gone the whole day without eating at all until you get home, which puts a strain on you paying attention in the second half of the day, because you're hungry. The second portion is still at Grant, it's, the older of the two is in the 8th grade, and he said that Grant has two lunchrooms, was not aware of the two lunchrooms?
Yeah.
And he said, the reason they have two lunchrooms is just because how big the, we have too many kids to be in one room. I said, okay. He goes, but they divide the lunchroom gifted everybody else. And I said, I'm sure it's not your table, because you sit with a lot of gifted kids? And he said, no, because some of my friends who didn't test into the gifted program this year were told they're not allowed to be in this lunchroom with us. So, I don't want kids who were with friends and now not with friends anymore being completely traumatized by the fact that for two years I've eaten with the same group of kids, and now I'm being told, because I did bad on a test that I'm graded on for my gift, for my classes, that I'm no longer in the gifted classes, and the people that are relaying this to me have other people have said this, too. The only thing that has changed of this friend group is that these two kids did not do well on that last test. They did good on their grades, but when it came to the last test and taking the beginning test to test them to gifted classes this year, they did not make where they needed to be, and therefore, they are not allowed in that lunchroom. I don't know how true that is, but if it is true, that's troubling. It could be looked upon as a form of segregation, which I know we all don't want. It's just, that's, that's three days of class, and it's, you've probably seen me a lot this year now that school's kicked off, so, I'm just trying to, you guys are doing a good job. I appreciate every one of you being here. I know it's hard at times. I know that there's times you just don't get along, times you don't see the same things, but I appreciate you being willing to have a calm, rational conversation to talk about it. I think it's important that kids see that. But I don't want the kids who aren't in gifted programs to learn, they're not, they're not smart. You know what I mean? Because that was my biggest problem when they had, like, we divided them up by the colors. We had the colors, like, the reds and the blacks or the whites, and it was, and the kids figured out quickly, you were in a, you were in a group dependent upon your grade point average. And so they were looking around me, and I'm like, oh, look at those kids. And then they got rid of that. I understand we have a big, a lot of 8th graders, two classrooms. If, if it is truly gifted, not gifted, there's got to be a better way to do it than that. There has to be. So, that was my comment.
Thank you, and I see Mr. Haner writing down some notes. We'll make some inquiries about this. Thank you very much.
Yeah, because I think, early on, at the beginning of the school year, you know, it's like, that's why the 6th graders came early first, so that they can kind of transition, you know, so maybe that's what it is, but I'd be interested to know about.
We're stuck here a bit, so I will definitely investigate that and figure out what's going on.
And did you talk to Mr. Saban, the principal over there?
No, I haven't had an opportunity to meet, I mean, I found out about this Saturday, at, at, literally, the letter gate, and I was told, for the first two days of his, for the first two days of class, that the way it shook, the way it was shaken out, and we're not pushing back on, is that all of the gifted kids were in one lunchroom, and then all of the other kids were in the other. Now, it could be, that gifted was in that lunchroom, because there just not as many of them as everybody else, but it's taken two days for five 13-year-olds to figure out, if you're in the other classroom.
The other lunchroom?
The other lunchroom. You're not out of the park academically, because if you were, you'd be here.
Do you, do you have his?
Yes, absolutely, yep, and I know Mr. Haner's already on it, so.
You have Mr. Dunston's number on there?
Got his information, we can get a, yeah, we can get the phone number later. Yep, all right, thank you, sir. Okay, number six, Agenda Confirmation, Letter A, Additions and Deletions to the Agenda. I myself would like to make a motion to add to, number seven, Old Business, a brief, and I do mean brief, discussion or just an update concerning the superintendent search. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Letter B, Approval of the Agenda with the Addition of the, again, Brief Superintendent Search Update under Old Business, which will be next, so, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please?
Sorry, I'm, I was still making my notes from the previous one.
I shall slow down.
There we go. I apologize to make a motion.
Swanger?
Okay, thank you.
Seconded by Dyer.
Gotcha. All right, Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Okay, now, moving on to Old Business, number seven, with the addition to the agenda, and I do mean that this is brief, but first of all, I do want to thank the members of the community and our staff who volunteered, more or less, for a very long day, but again, we very much appreciate the input, the participation on that, like, that was what, last Wednesday, I believe. The information that I was given today that I wanted to share is that we are in final contract negotiations with our candidate. That is all the information that I am able and willing to share right now, but there's your update that the final contract negotiations are taking place.
And staying on that same update, I would like to make a motion that we have a special board meeting next Monday night?
I will be out of town.
You will be out of town next Monday night, okay. So then we're going to have to figure out, because what, what we would like to do is, when negotiations finalize, we would like to have a special board meeting where the sole purpose is to announce the superintendent, and then take care of the business, and then have a meet and greet with the new superintendent, so that people can get to know that person.
Right, because we're getting back late that night, so.
Are you out of town all week, or is Monday night the only?
Yeah, no, just, we're coming back on Monday night, so I'm out.
Okay.
For a long weekend. Sorry, I mean, I don't have to be here, but.
No, do not apologize.
You have the right to go on vacation.
I know, and it's been planned for a while.
I hope you have fun. Does Tuesday night?
I've got a.
There we go.
Yep, you got cross-country and soccer season, so I've got the cross-country Tuesday. I'm okay every other evening other than Tuesday.
Same here, I'm available Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Tara, what does your availability look like?
If it's evening, are we talking the week of the 26th?
Correct.
Yes.
If it's evening, I can make it work.
Are you available Wednesday?
Nope.
Nope.
I'll make it work.
No, I mean, we can go Thursday if you're not available.
Thursday would be better. Thursday?
Thursday works for me.
So, what time?
Like, 6:30?
6:30, normal time, so, on the floor, there's a motion for a.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to have a special board meeting on Thursday, August 29th, 6:30 PM, for the sole purpose of voting on a superintendent. Yes, here in the community room. We also probably need to check and make sure this room is available.
Yeah, yeah, we will need to check on that.
I'll second that, and then we'll see what happens. Fair enough. Any discussion? Can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. 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 Dyer?
Yes.
Jolene, I am interested to see where we are as far as board meetings are concerned. I think I asked you about that, about how many board meetings, and you were on check of payroll.
Yeah.
Just let me know where we are with that, and how many, where we're at, and.
How many for the year?
Right, how many for the year?
I will get that tomorrow.
Assuming that's January to December, how does that fall?
Yeah, calendar year.
Okay, number eight, New Business. Letter A, Meta Resolution, as was alluded to earlier by Mr. Haner. The superintendent recommends approval of the resolution between Marion City Schools and Meta Solutions to use their bids for bus and van purchases for the 2024-2025 school year. Mr. Haner?
This is the ability for Marion City Schools to use Meta's pricing for buses and vans.
Which we've used in years, and has saved us.
It doesn't mean you have to buy a bus, it just gives us the opportunity if we need to, or van, or whatever.
Correct. Okay, do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please?
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Okay, next, under New Business Line Items, OPC MOU. The superintendent recommends an agreement between Marion City Schools and OPC for field trip hourly rate and substituting in different classification pay grades through June 30th, 2026. Mr. Haner?
Yes, sir. So employees working outside one of their own classifications, when an employee performs work or substitutes in a different classification, the employee shall be paid at their current step on the salary schedule. If the job they perform is at a higher classification with a higher salary schedule, they are to be paid at the current step level on the higher classification salary. And the same with the bus, is if they go on to pick up a field trip, and they'll get paid when, because typically, they would stop at that, let's say they went to OSU. When they got to OSU, that bus driver then would be put onto another pay scale of a lower, because they would be sitting, to where this now pays them at their bus rate, whether they're driving or sitting.
Regardless of the type of field trip you've got.
Yep.
Okay, or event, whatever it might be. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
So I'm just wondering, for record-keeping sake, if we could correct the, so that would be B, because we took out.
Oh, yeah, it is B, yes.
All right, so let's correct it, just for record-keeping sake.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Next up, number nine, New Business, in terms of agreements and contracts. Letter A, The superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and EAS Therapy, which will provide virtual speech-language pathologist services at the rate of $95 per hour, up to 37 and a half hours weekly for the 2024-2025 school year. Mr. Haner?
As we discussed in the past, speeches are nemesis, if you will. We're trying to get them, but it is hard, too. So, right now, the first contract was for St. Mary's, the second was for Grant, the third one is for Garfield and GW, and at least one more contract for speech services is pending.
I saw that in the, gotcha.
And I thank you for that explanation, because when I looked at it the first time, I'm like, I think we already approved this.
We did.
And then.
Several of them.
Right, and then the explanation.
And I've been waiting for the kickback from the board, like, I know they're going to ask, I said to Jolene, they're going to ask me, like, okay, didn't we just do this?
Right.
Yes, we did.
That was my first thought, and then I saw the explanation, so I'm glad you.
And the hours were different, too, so, gotcha. So, thank you for that information. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please?
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
9B, McKibben &amp; Monti In-Person Speech Contract. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and McKibben &amp; Monti Pediatric Therapy, which will provide speech therapy services at the rate of $150 per hour, 12 to 14 hours a week for the 2024-2025 school year. Mr. Haner?
And the other one would be virtual, this one's in-person. So we were able to get somebody to come into and get in-person done, so that's where McKibben &amp; Monti come into play.
In terms, and I know we've discussed this in the past, being able to do this in-house, and you said it's very difficult to find speech therapists, is, is there a step A, B, and C that we can start to take, or have we already done that and made those attempts to?
I have people calling old Columbus City Schools and asking for retired speech people that we can tag, in hopes to bring them in in other school districts, just trying to get creative to get speech therapists who are out there finding them and seeing if they want to get here and do some work for us. So we are talking, we're talking and talking and talking and trying and trying and trying to find people, trust me when I tell you.
Okay.
And for some reason, speech is the one we can't find anybody for. But we have company, so we're at least able to provide services for us.
Covering the gap for the time being. Okay, all right, thank you. Do we have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please?
Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
for the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, as it pertains to enrollment and HR. Mr. Haner?
And this is reoccurring each year for Power School. There were three attached to it, we took one away. I think there was some conversation about the lower price, but I think we took it away because there were some errors in that last one, so it will be brought back up to the board. But this is for our Power School that we use for attendance, for behaviors, that's our operating system, if you will.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
So I just have a quick question on it, because we use Power School every year. Do they only do one-year contracts? They don't offer, like, a three-year for a lesser rate?
Not that I know of.
I know, that would be so nice if they did. Like, if you get three years, you get a bonus, like, but no, okay.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Section number 10, executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn to executive session for any of these six listed purposes?
Do we need one? Do we need, we don't, we don't need one, do you, any of you?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the appointment and employment of personnel. Number one.
So for number one?
Number...
I'll second.
Number one.
Number one.
And the discussion will be in executive session. You can call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Okay, it is 7:01, we will temporarily adjourn for executive session, and we will be back. Okay, it is 7:18, we are back from executive session. We'll be moving to number 11, amendments to the consent agenda. Are there any amendments that need to be made? Okay, seeing that there are none, we will move to number 12, new business, consent calendar. Consent agenda approval, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion in the form listed below. The board will follow Board Policy 0165.1, Section E, in regards to the consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of all consent agenda items. Employment is specifically conditioned on and subject to successful background checks, receipt, and final administrative review of all application records, and receipt of all other necessary documentation. When we vote on this, it will be for letters B through I. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Guess there wouldn't be any, never mind. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Number 13 will be items removed from the consent agenda, which there were none. Moving on to number 14, board announcements in terms of future meetings, et cetera, which are listed.
With the special...
Pending the special, yes, for Thursday, or next Thursday at 6:30 PM in this room. Number 15, standing committee reports, do we have any, I'll just say that in terms of policy and personnel, we will do the final reading of the personal communication device coming up shortly. Are there any other committees that would like to report out?
Nothing for building and grounds at the time?
I think for building and grounds, we've got the final total of the move, and I think it was 56,000 for the total. Fifty-six thousand eighty dollars with 28,700 for the actual movers, but other miscellaneous items are underneath that, so the total was 56,080. And I think Evan, you mentioned the other, the capital improvement spending or whatever, what was that, 2 million, did we say?
Yeah, I think it's a little over 2 million for...
2,640.
Coming up, yeah.
So, again, I was at Grant today. Grant looks amazing. I do like our signs, and it looks like our, our staff worked really, really hard over the summer, and thank you, Mr. Brown, for you and your staff working amazing to get those beautiful, beautiful things done, and even I saw the mulching, and so they were, even though they were working on an open house, it looks beautiful now. So thank you for your hard work this summer, as well as your staff.
Any other committee information?
Mr. Wibling, I think we're gonna kinda wait on curriculum until we actually get a teaching and learning person in. Mr. Haner is out of town, but I know Mrs. Fitz is just chomping at the bits to talk about her grant that she received, and I was able to go out to the, I call it the farm, and there was a petting zoo, and all kinds of food and stuff there, and I'm really, really looking forward to seeing this go to the classrooms and the elementary buildings and stuff, so, can't wait to hear that. Is that all right with you? Ms. Swanger, we wait till we get someone in, do you have any burning questions about curriculum?
No, I am good.
Any burning questions? I'm pretty sure everybody probably got all their materials and everything.
Absolutely.
Right, I know the beginning of the school year is probably not the best time to ask to have a curriculum meeting, so I'm perfectly happy waiting. Get everything going, let them settle in, and then we'll fall back in.
And Mrs. Benninger has filed this fix that she wants to teach us about all the good reading stuff, so we can't wait.
We do have an informal work session on Tuesday, September 3rd, if Mrs. Fitz is ready and willing to present. Do we need to wait for her to present if she wants to make public that information?
If she wants to present before the...
That's a, I mean, you're both on the curriculum committee, so if you'd rather wait, fine, but if she wants the opportunity, it's something the community should hear, then...
She's really excited about it.
Yeah, and that's the work session that there won't be recorded, so...
We don't know where that's at yet.
Yeah, so might wanna have, if you wanna have her come, come to the, have a regular board meeting.
Okay, gotcha. If she's ready, and, so, all right. Sounds good to me. Okay, that was number 15. Number 16, information discussion items, we can't open this up to discussions with President Ratliff not here, I'm not gonna take this very part of all.
He's the one that added it to the...
Yeah, so I'm in board liaison positions. Does anybody have, I would rather wait until President Ratliff gets back, but if you have a discussion...
Right. I just didn't know if we were gonna keep the same ones we had last year, or if we were gonna change, or...
Are we okay tabling this until next time?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Okay, number 17, policy readings and approval. And this, again, would be specifically referencing the personal communication devices, this would be the final reading. I'm not going to go through the entire policy, just some of the highlighted points, some of this has already been in the books, but again, this is something that we've talked about numerous occasions here in Marion City Schools, but it's also, you know, coming down from the state as well. Just some of the more important items, I think, for parents and students and teachers and staff members alike. For purposes of this policy, personal communication device, PCD, includes computers, tablets, for example, iPad-like devices, electronic readers, e-readers, Kindle-like devices, cell phones, smartphones, iPhones, Android devices, Windows, mobile devices, et cetera, and/or other web-enabled devices of any type. Students may use PCDs before and after school, during their lunch break, during after-school activities, for example, extracurricular activities, at the discretion of the advisor or coach, which is very important, or at school-related functions. Use of PCDs except those approved by a teacher or administrator at any other time is prohibited, and they must be powered completely off, that is, not just placed into vibrate or silent mode, and stored out of sight. Students may not use PCDs on school property or at a school-sponsored activity to access and/or view internet websites that are otherwise blocked to students at school, that's one example of the things that have already been on the books. Students may use PCDs while riding to and from school on a school bus or other board-provided vehicles, or on a school bus or board-provided vehicle during school-sponsored activities, again, very important, at the discretion of the bus driver, classroom teacher, or sponsor, advisor, or coach. Distracting behavior that creates an unsafe environment will not be tolerated. Next, during after-school activities, PCD shall be powered completely off, not just placed into vibrate or silent, and stored out of sight when directed by the administrator or sponsor. Again, that's an important clarification. I'm gonna skip a couple, as again, now we're referring to things that have already been on the books. PCDs including but not limited to those with cameras may not be activated or utilized at any time in any school situation where a reasonable expectation of personal privacy exists. These locations and circumstances include but are not limited to classrooms, gymnasiums, locker rooms, shower facilities, restrooms, bathrooms, and any other areas where student or others, students, excuse me, or others may change clothes, or be in any stage or degree of disrobing or changing clothes. The superintendent and principal are authorized to determine other specific locations and situations where use of PCD, use of a PCD is absolutely prohibited. Just a few more sections I want to draw attention to. Students shall have no expectation of confidentiality with respect to their use of PCDs on school premises or property. The next one, and if anybody wants to make reference to it, see Policy 5517.01, which makes reference to bullying, other forms of aggressive behavior. This will be as it explicitly pertains to the personal communication devices. Another one, students are also prohibited from using PCD to capture, record, or transmit test information, again, something that's already been on the books. Possession of a PCD by a student at school during school hours and/or during extracurricular activities is a privilege that may be forfeited by any student who fails to abide by the terms of this policy or otherwise abuses the privilege. Just a couple more sections, this one's a little bit longer, though. Violations of this policy may result in disciplinary action and/or confiscation of the PCD. The principal will also refer the matter to law enforcement or child services if the violation involves an illegal activity. Discipline will be imposed on an escalating scale ranging from a warning to an expulsion based on the number of previous violations and/or the nature of circumstances surrounding a particular violation. If the PCD is confiscated, it will be released or returned to the student's parent or guardian after the student complies with any other disciplinary consequences that are imposed, unless the violation involves potentially illegal activity, in which case the PCD may be turned over to law enforcement. A confiscated device will be marked in a removable manner, will be marked, excuse me, in a removable manner with the student's name and held in a secure location in the building's central office until it is retrieved by the parent, parent or guardian, guardian, or turned over to law enforcement. School officials will not search or otherwise tamper with PCDs in district custody unless they reasonably suspect that the search is required to discover evidence of a violation of the law or other school rules. Any search will be conducted in accordance with Policy 5771, search and seizure. If multiple offenses occur, a student may lose his or her privilege to bring a PCD to school for designated length of time or permanent basis. A person who discovers a student using a PCD, recording device, or other device with one or two-way audio communication technology is, excuse me, in violation of this policy is required to report the violation to the principal. Students are personally and solely responsible for the care and security of their personal communication devices. The board assumes no responsibility for theft, loss, or damage to, or misuse, or unauthorized use of PCDs brought onto its property. Parents and guardians are advised that the best way to get in touch with their child during the school day is by calling the school office. Students may use school phones to contact parents or guardians during the school day. Do any other board members have any other comments concerning the final reading, the personal communication device policy?
Great, no, other than to point out that the Ohio General Assembly was the lead on this, signed by the governor, and so this then fulfills our obligation to take care of what the Ohio General Assembly has mandated us to do.
Anything else? Okay, seeing that there are no more comments, that moves us to number 18. Whoops, excuse me, yeah, let's vote on that. I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wibling?
Yes.
Ms. Swanger?
Yes.
Mrs. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guyer?
Yes.
Thank you very much, not with a stroke of my pen. All right, 18, other authorizations, resolutions, et cetera. Do we have any need to go into another executive session? Okay, seeing that there are none. Number 19, adjournment, do we have a motion to adjourn?